I am ready.
All right. Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting. It's Tuesday, April ninth of 2024. And the first item of business would be the roll call. Kirk Christian.
Okay, Reeves.
Here.
Sherlocki.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Mijewski.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Losnack Scanlon.
Here.
Payton.
Present.
Jensen.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
We have twelve Alders present.
All right, thank you. We are certified in compliance with open meeting laws. The next item on the agenda would be the public comment. I didn't see anybody signed up to speak tonight. That would take us to communications and presentations. Are there any communications from Alders? Go ahead.
This is to all the Alders, including people that Ben in particular, because you're getting off city council. Next week, if you could arrive personally to this meeting, about fifteen minutes early, it's picture time. It's about time that you guys' mugs are on the wall. So, dress beautifully. It's gonna be on the wall for eon, so get here. Well, besides DJ, but fifteen minutes beforehand. So Ben, hopefully you can get here next week 'cause you've been integral to city council for a number of years. And I want it recorded that you were actually on for a number of years. So, show up. That's an order, my last order.
I don't know if it'll be possible the other.
Pardon? We couldn't hear you, Ben.
I did make it on for one picture. I don't know if next week will be possible.
Okay, well, hopefully it is. Otherwise, we'll have to like paste you in.
Retina, reminder of time on that one?
Well, if our meeting's at seven next week. No, because we have Park and Recs right before. Yeah, so we're moving it to seven next week. So if you could show up by six forty-five. Mike Engelberger, hopefully the mayor will arrange it with him. We'll take our pictures.
Okay, are there any other communications?
It's good to see Alder Mijewski.
It is. And then I do have one communication. It is National Library Week. And they celebrated yesterday by doing the solar eclipse at Rotary Park, which is really cool. Jim was down there handing out glasses. I don't know if there's anything you wanna talk about, Jim. I see you're on there, but thanks for doing that.
No, thank you for, yeah, it was a great event. It was, the library was happy to do it. We handed out hundreds of pairs of glasses in the weeks leading up to the eclipse. And then we handed out about two hundred pairs on the day of at the meeting, or at the meetup at Rotary Park. It was just a cool thing to experience as a community. And the library was happy to play a role in that. And yes, as the mayor mentioned, it is National Library Week. So, and today is actually National Library Workers' Day. So, a big shout out to all our staff at the Stoughton Public Library that makes our library the wonderful community resource that it is. Thank you.
And thank you, Jim, for all that you do. Thank you.
Any other communications from Alders?
I just have one quick thing, since I was a little bit wondering regarding next Tuesday's schedule, back to that again. The city calendar says six PM city council reorg and six PM Parks and Rec meeting. So how, I didn't know if we had determined. I was kinda thinking we were gonna do Parks and Rec at seven.
It's up to you guys. We are having a plan commission meeting here at five thirty. So I anticipate that'll go to six. So you guys can arm wrestle whether or not you wanna have Park and Rec at six or council at six and the other one following.
I thought that the reason why we were meeting beforehand is because we needed to pass the Teagan Farm thing before the council meeting, 'cause that was gonna be brought up at that meeting. At the reorg, there was some scheduling.
There was a conversation, but I don't know if there was a final decision. It'll depend on the recommendation. And if you guys wanna take it the same night, we're open to it. We just need to know so we can get the agenda done in the next couple of days.
But you had other things that you wanted on there?
The only other thing we have is the one item from the plan commission. And that one probably won't take too long. And then the reorg stuff goes pretty quickly. It's just the committee assignments. I've been working on them, so I'll hopefully get them to the clerk in the next day or so. And then, maybe you two can talk offline and figure that out between today and tomorrow or whatever and let Candy know. Doesn't really matter to us, 'cause I'm gonna be here one way or another anyway, so it's up to all you guys.
I just wanna make sure we have the wisest use of our time.
No, no, I thought we had discussed that, but apparently not.
And just one other thing. Candy, can you give a quick update on the election?
Um, yeah. So congratulations to Alder Losnack Scanlon, Caravelo, Hirsch and Butler. You were reelected, and I did send out certificates of the election. I emailed today. The MBOC, the Minnesota Board of Canvas, certified the results yesterday. So congratulations. District four had sixteen names that received one vote each for the three-year alder seat. So we followed the state statute that's considered the tiebreaker statute. It's five point zero one, if you wanna look it up. But we placed the sixteen names in a bowl and drew one out. So that person has been emailed and sent a certified letter of notice of the election, and they have until Friday, April eleventh, to respond with an acceptance or not. If they decline, then council will decide the next step. Options being either a special election, turn it, an application appointment process that we've done in the past. But it will be up to council to decide which way you wanna go on that. Numbers from the election itself, it's been a year since we've had an election, so it was kind of nice to get back at it. We had three thousand six hundred and sixty-five residents vote. In the city, we have eight thousand seven hundred and seventy registered voters. That's about a forty percent, forty-two percent turnout. Of that, we had one thousand one hundred and ninety-one absentee ballots issued and nine hundred and ninety-two absentee ballots returned on time. So, that's just a breakdown of the election itself. So, thanks everyone that helped at the elections. And it'll be a busy year, so it was good to get back at it.
All right, thank you. Any questions about any of that?
Hi. I would just like to thank Candy and her staff and all the volunteers for making it a smooth run. And thanks for all your prep and everything that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, and we do have a couple of presentations.
And if I could, Mayor, real fast, on the election. I served as an election official, an inspector. Smooth, easy, like enjoyed being able to meet different people throughout the community. I wasn't in my own district, so that was kinda nice, too. Highly recommended if you have time and if you were eligible to do it. That would be great, so talk to Candy. It was great, good experience.
Thank you, thanks DJ.
All right, and we have a couple of presentations. The first one, we're just gonna do a quick update on the revolving loan fund. And I think, Avery, you're gonna go through this one?
Certainly I can. This document actually relates to the resolutions that you have. Or one of the resolutions that's up in regards to a recommendation from the committee of the whole to itself as a common council. This recap shows what is anticipated to be closed out yet, based upon all the topic conversations we've had with Becker Professional Services and WIBIC. Right now, the projection is that the ARPA fund will be spending fifty thousand dollars more than is available. As you know, the recommendation from the committee of the whole is to add one hundred thousand, so that will bring that fund back into a positive balance. While the RDA is approximately sixteen hundred dollars, if I can read that correctly, negative. I'm not worried about that, because WIBIC, if everything goes as planned, will be giving us about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars of principal and interest that was paid in the first quarter. So, that fund will be in a positive balance.
And as Dave mentioned, this is on later as an agenda item. So you can ask questions now or then. Okay, it looks like we have a couple folks here from our IT and media services. And they have something to talk about tonight, which they're excited about. And staff is starting to get excited about, because this is gonna be a big change for us. But they seek to minimize that, is what I've been told. So Director Montgomery, you're gonna start out?
Yeah, I'm gonna start out here. Over the past year, we've either been talking to, with council, either in a meeting or through the budget process or at CACP to let them know kind of what we've been up to. One of the things that we've been noticing over the last few years is the generation that is coming up through the educational system right now is not at all being introduced to Microsoft products. Office, Word, Excel, Publisher, those types of things. And so the trend is, everybody's moving to Google. And so that's what we've been doing over the past year is looking at the feasibility of moving the city of Stoughton into a Google environment. One of the things that we have discovered is the shareability of it, the security of it, the expandability, and just the ease of use and the likenesses between the programs. You know, if you use Microsoft Word versus Google Docs, they look a little bit different, but they work the same. Same thing with Excel and Sheets and Keep and the different applications that they've got. I had asked, one of the assistant directors in the city asked me, "Why are we doing this?" And the first thing I said to her is, "You've got kids in school." She goes, "Yes." I go, "What are they using?" She goes, "Google." Everybody is using Google. And at this point, Derek did a presentation that he did to the last leadership meeting, and I've asked him to kinda go through here. And some examples of the different agencies around the country or around the state that are using Google right now. So Derek?
All right. So, we're gonna start with why. Next slide, please. Google has better reliability, shareability, scalability. It's easier to access and use, has more tools available, and it's planning for the future. Next, thank you. As far as reliability, the data is stored in Google's data centers throughout the world. So on the screen right now, there's a map of all of the data centers that Google has. In our current situation, all of our files are stored in the Opera House building and backed up to City Hall. So with this, it gives us worldwide storage. And right now, if somebody's working remote and they wanna access their files, they have to connect to our VPN and then dual authentication and then remote into their computer, where with this, they'd be able to access their files with just a web browser. And then onto shareability. Users can share individually with one person or many people or even the public a file. So if I wanted to share a file with everybody, I could put it on my Google Drive, share it, and email out a link or put that link on a website. You can do that with entire folders. And we're actually planning on using that for, make your guys' life easier when you're opening packets. Right now, you have to download the Adobe packet, open it in Adobe, where now you would go into a Google folder that's a publicly available folder, and everything would just be listed in there. So it wouldn't be, you have your agenda and then all of the supporting documents individually in a folder that would work on all of your tablets and computers. It would make sharing calendars easier or having publicly available calendars. We're already doing this with our city website. The calendar on the city website is a Google calendar, and I can update it. A bunch of people have access to update it. We've already been doing this for ten years with our staff at WSTO. They're all scheduled through Google Calendar. And you can share with anybody with a Gmail account. So everybody's city emails would become a Gmail account. It'd still be, you know, like dwesby@cityofstoughton.com. You would just access it through Gmail. And then.
Of course, the council members can't be sharing because of open meeting laws. So they'd have to be careful that they didn't have a shared doc that they were communicating on.
Right. And then on scalability, right now, we have a finite amount of space on our servers. And we're currently already using sixty percent of our space, and we're running out very quickly. Where with Google, if we need more space, we can call them and upgrade our space by ten terabytes at a time, and it'd take forty seconds. Where right now, it would take months to get more space. So it's easy to access. You can, like I said, you can access it on a computer, a tablet, a phone, anything that you can load Google onto. And that's Google Sheets, Google Slides, Docs, Mail. All of that is very similar to Microsoft Office products, so there's really no issue going from one to the other. It's more like going from an older version of Office to a newer version of Office. And it is easier to do some things in Google, like make pivot tables. Have you ever made pivot tables? And Dave has played a little bit with Google Sheets, so. There's a whole lot more tools available than what Microsoft has. Docs, Slides, Sheets, Mail and calendars are all like Microsoft. But you can create Google, custom Google Maps now. We can, we will be using Google Meet instead of Zoom. Every account has a built-in Google Meet. We'll be switching to that to save some money on that as well. Forms, so there's a lot of reasons to use the Google Forms. We use it for our part-time staff to submit their timesheet, because they don't have access to BSNA to enter their timesheet. So this is just an organized way where they go to our touchscreen and say how many hours they worked, and then we know. Google Earth for videos. We use Google Earth videos in our council catch-up that I do with the mayor. Oh, and as far as the Google Maps, we did create like the voting map districts, where you can zoom in on your house and click, and it'll tell you what census district you're in, which aldermanic district you're in, and where you vote. So that's really handy. It'll also remove file size limits to emails. So when you send an email from Google, if the file's too big, it just drops it in your Google Drive and sends them a link. It's real seamless with that as well. And on the other end, they don't have to be a Google user to download it. They'll just be able to download it from the link. And then it's future planning. So right now, there's a bunch of K-12 schools that are using this, including Stoughton, McFarland and Oregon, from what I could tell. I believe the city of, the Madison Metropolitan School District is using it as well. There's a lot of higher education places out there using it. Brown University was one that I found. Many levels of local government are using it. The city of Kenosha just switched to it. The city of Rice Lake has been using it for a long time. City of Los Angeles, Sheboygan County. The list goes on and on. We have a list that we got from our integrator as well. A lot of national, federal level agencies are using it. The US Army is using it, the State Department, NASA, the Air Force, the Navy, NOAA, a whole bunch more places are using it. And it's also future planning for space, because we're gonna run out of the space we have. And physical space is a lot more expensive than cloud storage. And then as additional benefits, it'll be easier to collaborate. Right now, if John and I want to open the same Excel sheet, one of us can open it, but the other one can only open it as read-only. In Google, we would be able to open it and work in the same document in real time and see what each other is putting in. It'll be easier for our police, fire and EMS, as they'll be able to access their stuff from the squad cars. It'll be easier to work with departments that aren't on our network, like utilities and library. And you can embed Google's stuff into websites. Like we have our city calendar, our city elected officials directory is also a Google Doc. And where they can be updated from a Google Sheet into your Google Doc seamlessly. We can skip what we need from them, 'cause that was for the staff. Any questions?
You touched on everything but security. And that is a big concern of mine. I mean, I mean, there's a couple of concerns. I mean, one, we're creating a monopoly with Google, which might mean that then they have us and their prices will continue to go up, and it might not become affordable. And the other thing is, if everything's on the web and Google gets hacked or there's some other thing, there's, is there, one, how are you handling security? And two, is there any physical backup for like the important documents, like a record of our minutes or any important decisions? Or is that all on the cloud, which I guess I'm not really comfortable with?
Google is FIPS certified, which is exactly what the police need for all of their documents and the government agencies and the state evidence and all that. That all has to be FIPS certified. Also, as far as Google getting hacked, there's a much greater chance of Stoughton getting hacked, as we've all seen. As far as backup goes, we're still gonna be running backups. But also, Google does their, you know, they have redundant spaces in the event that they have their data centers go down. It's still stored in multiple locations. We are still running our ransom care for ransom attacks. That will interface with Google. So we can still monitor if something hinky is going on inside of those files. It will immediately shut down the users, deactivate their Google accounts, deactivate their domain accounts, and then we respond accordingly. But I am not worried at all about security, especially with some of these other federal agencies that are on it. You know, you can't get a whole lot more secure than that. And I think Google actually had a thing out there where they had a million-dollar reward for anybody who could hack their system. And that's still open. So like I said, I'm not concerned at all about that. I'm more concerned about Microsoft Exchange servers on-prem.
So other than others getting into Google, what about Google itself? I mean, they've been pretty clear about the fact that they scan personal emails on Gmail to solicit advertisers and to give them their data. And with the advent of AI and their chatbots, they've been pretty transparent about the fact that they are doing that for machine learning as well. Do we have any safeguards in place to make sure that our data and emails are safe from Google?
Well, we're not personal accounts, we're government accounts. And that's how it's set up as government. I do not know for a fact that they don't scan governments, but I really would be surprised if they did. And it's not gonna be any different than somebody you're doing emails right now, and you get unsolicited emails, 'cause you're all getting those. Because email addresses gets sold. Doesn't matter if it's cityofstoughton.com, CI.stoughton.com or CI.stoughton.wi.us or your personal Gmail accounts. You're all getting things. You go to a website, it downloads a cookie. You get random emails, random pop-ups. But being at a government account, I don't expect that that's going to increase anything that anybody would get.
So, being a government account, they don't look into that?
I can't say for certain, but I don't think the Air Force would put up with a whole lot of ads showing up.
Is there a way that you can find out? I mean, I feel like it's just going into.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, I'll repeat.
I have a few, but I'll be brief. So for the first ones, the list that you provided, are those folks who have signed up for exclusivity with Google? Like they're gonna use it as we are planning to use it? Or, you know, students across every university use Google? Because most universities provide certain certifications for people to have Google accounts linked to their, like UW-Madison has it. Previous institutions that I've worked at for universities have it, where they have a relationship with Google, they have a Google email. It's not the same as their campus email, but they can use it to use Google services. They also have Microsoft services. So is that list exclusivity?
We're not utilizing any Microsoft services.
Well, yes.
And as far as the Gmail accounts, it's a Gmail account, but it's not a Gmail account. It is strictly, you know.
Of course.
First initial, last name, cityofstoughton.com.
The Google suite is what we're talking about, right? Government, Google suite? Yeah. So those other entities that you listed are using that business or governmental suite? Okay. Then I guess, when you were doing research for going to Google, although most students are using Google now, why, in your experience, did you choose to go to the direction of Google versus other cloud-based platforms that can be used? So Microsoft now also has Office 365, backs up into OneDrive, does very similar stuff and uses the already familiar formatting of all the Microsoft suite. So is there, that's just one example, but there, I'm sure there are others out there.
There's others. We actually did look at Microsoft 365. It is a bit more expensive, but also, too, the future that is coming up is not on 365. They're on Google. So that's why what we're trying to do is plan for the future.
Sure, okay. And then when we're switching from Zoom, which is a particular question about accessibility to meetings, do you need to have a Google account to be able to attend meetings on Meetup?
No. No, anybody can just, it's just like Zoom, where you can just click the link and join the meeting.
Okay, great, that's good. And then the last one I have that I wanna ask, I'm sorry, I have so many. I just have some. You were talking about multi-factor authentication and the VPNs no longer being necessary relative to security. The security's better. What are then the like back, like, I guess, when an employee is accessing something from an unknown Wi-Fi, like a public Wi-Fi, in the case of an MFA or a VPN, you can use any Wi-Fi theoretically. Using the VPN will secure you. But Google just topping onto your Google Drive, what, do they use some type of like two-factor authentication in order to log into the business suite? Because I would be, I would be like worried if I were working at the Starbucks down the street. Not that a Starbucks is unsecure, sorry to say that out loud. I don't know. But you, like, and I just popped open a browser and I was looking at meeting minutes that have yet to, or an agenda that hasn't come up or an item that we have not yet voted on, but we're reviewing or something from closed session, like, how does, how do we feel secure? Or just open up a browser?
Well, those documents that, you know, in the case of how you're using this as a closed session item, those are only released to council people, so nobody from the outside can get into them anyway. But all of the users. But all of the users have to still authenticate through our domain, so our domain controllers are still going to stay in place.
Okay.
So the DCs are still there and Google can be set up for dual-factor authentication.
I see. So it's not that we're eliminating any of those efforts. We're eliminating how we're currently using them, we're going to use them in a different format. So I think that answers some of the questions about how secure is our, our documents, because when, when presented and said, you just open a browser?
Yeah.
Although that's an oversimplification of what you do, um, then it kind of answers to some of the qual, our concerns that we have about logging in on an unknown network.
Yeah, one of the things Derek and I were discussing is how much of a deep dive do we want to do in the technical aspects of this?
Sure.
At this particular level?
Sorry, that's my, that's my fault.
Yeah.
But I was wondering, and, and that helps alleviate some of my concern too.
Yeah. From my, from my perspective and my experiences and professional judgment, I have no concerns.
Awesome. Thank you. That ends my slew of questions.
All right. Who's next?
Hearing none.
That's it? Go ahead.
I just have one comment. It's, um, you're saying you're planning for the future and then all the schools are using Google. I'm not, you know, it doesn't really matter which way we go on this, but it's, I'm thinking about looking around the room, how many different things have all of us learned over our years? Just because they're using it now doesn't mean that that's what's going to be in the future, and it doesn't mean that they can't learn something new. Because I think all of us in our careers have learned multiple programs, multiple things, and now you're asking us to learn a new one. So I'm not really concerned about the future generations that are a little bit more pliable with their technology than most of us in this room. So I, I, I think that is a moot point. I think if it's the best thing out there at the cheapest rate and that they will have us secure, then I'm okay. But I wouldn't talk about future generation because who knows what's going to happen?
I mean, technology changes every day, um, and I realize that. I mean, I started out with Lotus Notes and, you know, then went up through, you know, the different variations of Windows. I even programmed in DOS, but, um...
Yeah, I got you, be a diet torteur.
But, uh, this is...
Worse.
But, you know, we're...
It's like an auction.
Chisels and, um, yeah, so like I said, what we're using, and I mean, no offense, but this generation's not going to be around very much longer. So we're looking at the multiples that are coming up underneath us and we want to make... Okay.
I am a millennial good sir.
But, uh...
Geez, that's what I had at least 20 up there.
And they'll still be using Google, but, uh...
Yeah.
Anyway, I want to thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Will you be hosting tutorials for us?
Actually, Google is also, there'll be an implementation specialist onsite who's going to help the team with it. There's also going to be, uh, remote videos and training sessions. And then Derek, I, and another person in my staff, Spencer, who grew up in the Google environment, we're going to be going around hitting everybody. And the other thing that we're going to do is, uh, schedule four hours meetings with each one of the directors, and one person from their staff go through all of their files and go through examples of what can be done. Many of the departments, like the Rec Department right now, the Police Department, Clerk's Department, HR, Library?
Us.
Us are already using many of the components of, of Google. And so what we want to do then is we'll be doing some training in there, and then as it rolls out, we will be going onto the different sites and answering any questions. What we also maybe want to try and do is find one person who's buying into it 100% and then train the trainer. And then that will be the go-to person in their departments, either one or two people who can assist in any questions that, you know, the first three levels of questions.
All right. I look forward to it amongst everything else that we need to do. So, and you probably need to allocate more than four hours for me.
We'll just help you out personally.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time to research it. I know, you know, these are, these are decisions you don't take lightly and you did a lot of research to get to this point, so I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
We'll get into our action items here. Uh, the first item for action is the consent agenda. Looks like we have a few items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sherlucky, would anybody like have anything acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Uh, next item is, uh, new business, ordinance six is a first reading, and I think we have a minor tweak to do it. This one came from the Plan Commission last night, all the person Caravella.
Yes, this is ordinance, uh...
You? Uh, this is ordinance six of 2024, annexing certain city-owned land located within the town of Dunkirk. Um, and is this going to be just a first reading?
Yeah, it's a first reading. We put it, it's type-sensitive just so we could get the first reading in tonight and answer any questions and bring it back. I mean, you always can waive the rules if you want, but I don't know if there's really a need to.
Okay. Um, yeah, this is, I, I don't know, this has been at Parks, uh, for a while. Uh, this is a piece of property at 2464 County Highway A that will be annexed in the city of Stoughton. The structures that are there will be taken down. Whatever remediation that's necessary will take place, and this property will be incorporated into Racetrack Park. There is one additional piece of information to this, though there is a fiscal impact to the city to the tune of $3,003 for taxes owed that will be owed to Dunkirk Township.
That's my understanding. Dave, you want to give us the specifics on how that works?
Uh, the statutes indicate that, uh, we have to pay to the, um, town that's losing the property five years of the town taxes. So I just pulled the latest property tax bill, found the town taxes, multiplied by five.
All right. Yeah, that's pretty typical on all of our annexations. Oftentimes, it's actually built into the TIFs if it's in a TIF district, but this one's not, so, um, and I think there's monies in, in the budget for that as part of the, I don't know if it, where it's coming from, if it's coming from the Parkland Fund or...
Yes, the resolution indicated that the Park Development Fund would be paying for these items.
All right. So this is here for first reading. Um, if you have any questions or comments, um, let us know, otherwise it'll be coming back in a couple of weeks.
Do, do we have to do anything with the wording of the ordinance to make sure that that fiscal impact piece gets in there, or do we just...
I think Dave and Candy will work that out and probably update the resolution for the next meeting.
We can talk about it, but I'm not too concerned, uh, with, um, the $3,000 for annexation. I'm more concerned with potential remediation costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to the next item, and that is, uh, R49 of 2024. And these were recommendations that you all made from Committee of the Whole, and they were at Finance earlier tonight, so all the person Schumacher.
All right. This is, uh, R49 of 2024, a resolution to amend the 2024 adopted budget for ARPA funds to Stoughton Area Community Foundation. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, was it Jensen? All the person Jensen, all the person Schumacher.
Um, this went through Committee of the Whole on the 28th and then through Finance tonight. This is the $75,000 from ARPA, um, to be transferred to the Stoughton Area Community Foundation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one also came through Finance tonight, R50 of 2024.
All right. This one is R50, 2024, resolution to amend the 2024 adopted budget for ARPA funds for revolving loan program. So moved.
Second.
Second by Jensen, all the person Schumacher.
Um, this one also through Committee of the Whole and Finance tonight, um, is $100,000 into the revolving loan program. Um, a couple of other things that are kind of down in the whereas's on this. We're looking to get Baker Professional Services, uh, to kind of coordinate the, how these loans are working so that, um, as it's set up now, there's two, two different entities working with it, so this would put it into one location, um, make things a little bit more streamlined as far as, um, getting those funds to people that are applying for them. Uh, the other bit is an accounting adjustment, and so I don't butcher that. I will have Dave explain what this accounting adjustment includes.
Baker Tilly is part of the 23 audit, indicated that the loans that we pay out are not to be recorded as an expenditure, but to be recorded as an accounts receivable. So technically, we have budgeted too much for expenses, uh, in the ARPA funds, so this, I took this opportunity to clean up some things and get it so that the budget and actual should be closer to equal.
All right. Any questions or comments? President Hirsch.
Yeah. That should be a part of this resolution, or should that be part of something else, that cleanup? I mean, it seems kind of clunky to have the cleanup part of this unless it's all revolve, about the revolving loan.
You could take out the entire budget amendment and you could take out the adjustment if you want to. Uh, you don't have to do anything. We'll just be over budget and, or under budget in expenditures then. So if you want, you have that authority, or option, I should say.
Is there a pro or con to that?
I'm just trying to make it easier so that, uh, things align, so that the budget is same as the financial statements.
No, I, I don't mind about that, but I think it, it clunks up the resolution. I mean, the resolution is about ARPA funding for the revolving loan, and then all of a sudden on the back end, there's this section about, you know, the, kind of cleaning up the books. I guess that, I, I think that that should have been a separate resolution, because if you're, in future, if you're going to search for that, you're going to have to remember that that's part of this resolution because it doesn't say that in the title. So how are you going to ever find it again? That's where I think having a standalone resolution might be a little bit better.
Uh, I, as I said, you certainly have the option to take that language out of the resolution if you wish. As opposed, and answering your question, how am I going to find this? The, uh, budget amendment will be attached as a document in the BSNA software, so it will be easy to find.
Okay. As long as it's not going to get lost. I'm just trying, I've never seen it kind of stacked like that.
Any other questions or comments? All the person Pete.
Just really quickly, the now therefore be it resolved has a budget expenditure of $75,000. It's listed on the chart in the next page. The chart on the next page lists $79,000. Is that just a typo? Am I misunderstanding numbers?
Uh, I think we're pointing that out, it should actually say decrease budget expenditures by 79,000.
Okay. Then how shall I go about correcting that?
So you're talking about right there?
So now therefore be it resolved?
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. So I guess procedurally, we could do a motion to amend the resolution, do a vote on the amendment, and then do a vote on the resolution as amended. So then I would move to amend the resolution to read, um, on the now therefore be resolved line, that it should be a decrease of budget expenditures by $79,000 rather than an increase.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
That was, I heard Butler first. All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. So that takes us to the resolution as amended. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you. Good catch. Um, next one is R51. That one's also coming from Finance.
All right. This is, uh, R51 of 2024. This is a resolution for the repayment of debt service fund advanced to emergency medical services. So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Jensen, all the person Schumacher.
Um, EMS had some monies advanced to them, uh, in the past and had, uh, repaid some of that back to the general fund over time. Um, this one just makes it, makes it all due.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Ellinger?
Again, this is, uh, just cleaning up something, uh, so that we don't have to continue to track it for the next eight years. And what's really happening right now is the debt, um, EMS fund has got a interest-free loan, and they're using that excess cash to earn interest on. So I'd rather just clean up everything and give the money to debt service where it belongs.
Yeah, I would say while you were gone last week, we did have a discussion we should follow up on with, with Chief Rip, so he kind of understands on the financials how this will look in that enterprise fund. So this is just a reminder to do that, so I don't forget tomorrow. Um, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next item is R52. All the person Schumacher.
Keep on rolling. This is, uh, R52 of 2024, resolution for the approval of service agreement with Iwork Systems Incorporated. So moved.
Second.
Who was that? I missed it. Pretty quick over there tonight. Second by all the person Jensen. All the person Schumacher.
This one had come through tonight, um, quickly. This was, um, a, a software system that deals with permits and, and, uh, other applications into the departments that exists already. This is an expansion of their services.
Anything you want to add, Director Ellinger?
Um, from my viewpoint, I'm not concerned with the $5,000 increase in the planning budget at this time of the year, as I had indicated to the Finance Committee. I'm sure that Chris, as she looks at things, will want to make some other changes to the departments, so we may have to do something at, you know, in the future, but, uh, for now, I'm not concerned about, with it. I guess I'm going to turn over the floor to Chris to see if she has anything to add. to see if she has anything to add.
Okay, here you go.
Hi, yeah, so we're just looking to get the approval from you guys so we can start the process of hopefully expanding and streamlining some of our permitting right now. We currently use I-Works. I think it has a max of three spots. This will increase it to, like, the next tier up, I think is 20, which isn't a lot in between, but that's, that's what we're looking at doing.
All right, my understanding is, is you use these for your forms and it'll help make sure that everything kind of gets turned in together because right now, this stuff kind of trickles in and different methods and it's really hard to put all the pieces to the puzzles together sometimes.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We have, we've been getting stuff right now. Part of it is paper. People will fill it out and we have to input it into the system as it sits right now. Additionally, we'll get the form and then people email us the information and it's coming in in several different areas and to different people. We're hoping this is going to push all that together and that way we can track the projects better as they come in, so.
All right, thank you. And I think Candy, you also use this for some of your programming as well. I think you were part of the conversation.
Yes, I do. Yes, we use that for dog license and our alcohol and special license, so, yep.
Yeah, and my understanding is one of the features is the credit card. Is that something you're going to utilize or both of you, or?
Um, I know with I-Works, they have their own payment portals. There's two of them, I believe, that the program utilizes. Right now, we are not utilizing that in the Clerk's Department and I don't think planning is either. So it's something we, we'll be talking with Dave about if we want to approach that before dog license begin this fall. So it doesn't link, that's part of it. We use point and pay, so we have to match the payments up in a different program with what's happening in I-Works. So it's, doesn't link right now correctly.
Yeah, I think it would create a huge efficiency, especially on the dog licensing.
Yes.
They get a big rush at them and, yeah, when you're trying to match up and it, you know, the, the payment with, with the application, and it's also two steps for those residents that are trying to get the dog license. So it's a little bit cumbersome for them to log out of one program and then log into another one for payment. So I, I think there's some opportunity there and I'm guessing that the more we learn about it, the more features we'll probably want to utilize. President Hirsch?
Chris, you were saying that this will open up like 20 slots. If that's not enough, is there a next level up that we actually, is where the city needs to be? I mean, I, I don't want to... If this is about efficiencies and it's not enough, then we're not being truly efficient unless it's extreme cost at the backend.
Yeah, sure, that's a great question. So we currently have, I, I think more my point was, is I was a little surprised. We were like, oh, I think we wanted to get five more, like, permits online and then they were like, okay, you can go from three to 20. It was like, oh, okay. So I think what we're going to try to do is we're going to use this as kind of, you know, if we have the extra slots, we're going to start talking with some of the other departments and if they need to utilize some of this. And hopefully, like, linking them to other projects, so, you know, but I don't see us using 20 for our particular department. You know, a lot of it, we could, for example, you know, you look at land divisions, right, and there are several different types of land divisions, but really that is, that can be one permit where you click the button, you say this is an extraterritorial, or this is a plat, or this is, you know, you know, a subdivision, or something along those lines. So like, even though it sounds like there's a lot of different options, that, that should really be one permit because really a lot of that, you should be using some of the same, you know, yes, no questions, for lack of a better way of saying it. So I don't think we would run out of 20. Like, I think 20 is going to be plenty. I, man, I don't know. I don't, I hope we're not needing more than like 20 permits in our department, to be quite frank. But I, you know, if, if it comes to that, I think we'll cross that bridge when we get there. The only reason I could see us using significantly more permits is in the event that like we end up, you know, we're, we're paying for it at this point. It's, it goes from three to 20, right? And so as a result, if we have extra slots open, I think we need to open those up to other departments to use. And if the other departments then go and expand and expand, I think then it's one of those things, those departments probably need to look into paying for their own program in I-Works. But at this juncture, I, I, man, I don't think we're going to use 20, but it's just, it was just the way that it shakes out with them, so.
Okay, good to know.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R 53. Last one for Finance tonight.
All right, this is R 53 of 2024. This is a resolution for the First Amendment to Payment for Municipal Services Agreement. So move.
Second. Second by Johnson, all the person Schumacher.
This is the agreement around the, the Greenspire properties. Things that, the two, they wanted some changes in there. One of the parties that was part of this agreement, the only thing that they needed was to specifically spell out that property is not subject to any property taxation. Added that line in there, as well as where some additional copies are going to attorneys. City attorneys have looked at this and agree with the languages that were added in.
All right, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, so basically this was the attorney for the tax investors or somebody for the buyer. They apparently hadn't looked at the agreement yet and so it was provided to them. So that's why it's back before you two weeks again. But I believe this is the last time that you will see this one and then the Greenspire sale can close and they can start the renovation work on the, the project.
Yeah, if you haven't heard about the project, there's a, a tax credit deal that is in place. So it's basically a group of non-taxable investors get the property, they get tax credits to do the renovation, they sell the track, tax credits to the investors, and then after a period of time, the Housing Authority gets the, the project back on paper again for basically nothing. So we get the renovation done, which is a great thing. And then we also secured additional funds that we can do a very substantial sustainability effort there. So they're talking anything from solar panels to geothermal. I mean, they're looking at everything right now to figure out what makes sense there. So at Greenspire, if you're not familiar with that, a lot of those units there, most of them are subsidized for low-income elderly folks that live there. So having a brand-new, you know, basically remodeled apartment with virtually no electric bill will be huge for them. So we're really excited about this project. So we, we're, we're excited to get going here. So this has been kind of a long haul. Multiple people had to come in that were specialized, like tax attorneys, to help facilitate this deal because nobody in our organization had dealt with anything like this. But we think this is a huge win for, for those residents that live there. Any questions on this? This is a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, basically is what this is.
Yes, so, I mean, basically if, currently the property is tax exempt, it, plan is for it to remain tax exempt and this agreement conveys that. But because the city still provides services, whoever owns the property will be providing a payment to the city to cover the municipal services that serve the, the property going forward. So this is recorded against the property. So whoever owns it, doesn't matter, they aren't going to be bound by it.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Question?
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead.
No worries. I, I want to thank you. Affordable and low-income housing is very, very difficult to get for people who need it right now. So I want to thank the city for its commitment to this project. And will it result in any additional housing or will it be the same number of units?
It'll be the same number of units. They're going to do upgrades that will include more ADA accessibility, you know, wider areas in doorways and, and the restrooms and, you know, the grab bars, as well as, you know, new flooring and countertops and I think maybe appliances as well. So it's really going to be a, a huge renovation. We've been working with the property management company to try to not fill all the units so we can minimize how many people will be displaced because we know that's going to happen and it's going to be a huge burden for those that will potentially have to move during the renovation. As part of the requirement, the developers have to make accommodations for that. So I'm sure that's something that they've been working on. Some of those folks will end up in Stoughton. Some may go live with family members and then come back. Others may have to, you know, to go to other places while the work's being done. And I wish I could give you a timetable, but at this point, I don't even know when they're going to begin. So, but that is a requirement under the, under the laws and the contracts that they have to be able to, to help find, you know, relocate people during the process because we certainly know that's going to be a huge deal.
Thank you for that sensitivity. And even though it may not result in even more, more units, the quality of life of each apartment and its accessibility, that, those are great improvements. Thank you.
Yeah, and if you ever want to tour the facility, they're more than happy to show the facility. There's about 17 out of the 92 units, I believe there is, that have been renovated over the last several years. We've only been doing between like three to six a year and this is really the only way we can do them all. But you can certainly see it's like night and day, the difference between the ones that have been renovated and the ones that are original that, oh, they date back to the, I don't know, somewhere between the 60s and 80s, depending on the buildings. So they're, they're in desperate need. As much as they try to maintain them, you know, things just age and, you know, they get wear and tear, so. But yeah, we're, we're looking for more opportunities because we all know that there is a housing crisis, but, you know, it's getting more and more difficult to, to put these projects together. But we were really pleased that we were selected by WIDA to get the tax credits for our renovation project. We were one of two in the state during this last period that was awarded those grants for this type of project.
Thank you for this great work.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so the next two, we're at the Plan Commission last night and Rick's going to kind of give us a status report of where we are on, on both of these resolutions.
Yes, so these conditional use permits were considered by the Plan Commission last night and were recommended for approval. However, state law and the ordinance requires that there be a public hearing held on the conditional use permits and the notices weren't sent out for that. So because there are certain timelines under the ordinance to act, we can't take action on these tonight, but the goal is to have the public hearing at the first meeting in May. That's when the notices can get out. So the public hearing will actually be before the common council. So you can do the public hearing there at the first meeting in May and then act on these conditional use permits, whether to approve or deny or impose more conditions. So I guess tonight, rather than take action, it would just be to postpone consideration of these until the first meeting in May.
And certainly, if you have any questions about the conditions that the Planning Commission put on there, we would field those questions. Chris was instrumental in putting the, the documents together to make sure that both of them, you know, get done appropriately. The conditional use permit, as we've talked about in the past, is a, is a process where, you know, it's like a quasi-judicial process. So the evidence to make a decision instead of a legislative decision. And I try not to get into the weeds on it, but basically you can't not prove, you can't vote down a conditional use permit just because there's a particular thing you don't like about it unless you can show that it's really detrimental to the neighborhood. And that's about as far as I'll go with it.
Yeah, and I can provide more information at the next meeting. I mean, essentially, the conditional use, when you establish a conditional use in a zoning district, you're saying by ordinance, that use is consistent with the other uses in the neighborhood. And if the applicant meets or agrees to meet all the ordinance conditions, then the, I guess presumption is that they'll get the conditional use permit. Then the only way you could deny it is if you believe you have substantial evidence to say that there's, it violates some sort of ordinance requirement. So it really, it comes down to, is there public testimony or any other evidence in the record that would support a decision to deny it if the applicant has satisfied all of the ordinance requirements? I can maybe dive into more of the details at the, the next meeting if you would like. Basically, the whole conditional use landscape has somewhat changed since 2017 when they passed statutes that restricted your discretion for these.
And I know it's been one of the goals of Attorney Dregney and with Chris coming on board, to really take a look at these types of ordinances and make as much as we can permissive uses instead of conditional uses. The second one for the indoor commercial is, we feel is really a no-brainer. I know Chris feels like something like that, we should be able to just improve administratively because it's a use for something that's allowed in our downtown. Why would we need to approve it? It seems kind of a waste of everybody's time. The other one's a little bit more complicated and I don't know if you want to touch on anything tonight, Chris, or if you want to save it for the next meeting.
I can touch on it a little bit. Basically, you know, in districts with zoning, you have what's considered a, you know, permitted use and then you have the conditional use, which you can add additional requirements onto. We, you know, the, that's one of the goals is to start looking through our ordinance and amending some of our ordinance with some of these. We have a, you know, a two-flat. It's, we have requirements that we can put on that and those were presented to the Plan Board. But in the particular case with a restaurant in the downtown area, you know, if the restaurant was serving alcohol or there, you know, were other parameters, that's normally like a trigger for the conditional use. In the ca, in this case, it's a restaurant that's in a downtown area, which is, probably should be a permitted use in those districts. And I think that's something that we need to look at and consider, especially when we have a restaurant that's getting up and going and our permits aren't, you know, super cheap. And it's, you know, I think it would help. So that's just my two cents, but we'll be looking into the permitting or the, just the zoning here in the future.
All right, any questions or comments on this? I don't think we really need to take any action, do we?
And I don't think any formal action is necessary tonight. This will just be on the agenda for the first meeting in May. We've got the notices ready to go, so they're going to get published. So this will be on your agenda for the first meeting in May.
Okay. I don't even know if we need to do that. So we just want to let you know that before we got too deep into it. But I would encourage you to at least look at those resolutions between now and the May meeting. So you got a little head start on that. And then I just, we'll, we'll get together and, and figure out the schedule then for the reorg meeting next week. And then the week after that, we'll have our regular council meeting. So I think that's pretty much all we had for tonight. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Peyton, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Have a great night.